கத்தொடியே பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாவுறாக
கிளோரி பீடுக்காத் சொல்லெனே
இங்கே ஒரு மனிதனை அபிஷேகம் மன்னுகிற ஒரு சூன் நிலையே நான் பார்க்கறோம்
ஹீர் விரீட் பார்ட் ஸிட்யூவேஷன் இன்விச் அமேன் அஸ் அனோய்ட்டிட்
கிருஸ்தோவ வாள்வில் அபிஷேகம் என்பது மிகவும் முக்கியமானது
அனோய்ட்டிங் ஸ்வேரி இம்போர்டென் இன் கிருஸ்டியன் லைவ்
அபிஷேகம் இல்லாமல் கிருஸ்தோவ வாள்க்கை நிறைவை சந்திக்காத
விதாட் அனோய்ட்டிங் கிருஸ்டியன் லைவ் கேனாட் ரீச் ஸ்பூனெஸ்
ஆனால் அதே நிறத்தில் அபிஷேகம் பெற்றால் மட்டும் போதாத
அத்த செய்ந்த டைம் அனோய்ட்டிங் ஸ்வேரி ஜஸ்டினா
அந்த அபிஷேகத்தின் மொலமாய் ஒரு பூர்ணத்தை நாம் பெற்றுக்கொள்ளவென்றிரும் நம்மடே கடமை
இடி ஸ்டேர் டூடி டு அட்டேன் பர்஫ெக்ஷன் து தேட் அனோய்ட்டிங்
அபிஷேகத்தினுடைய வேலையை நாம் சேல்படுத்த வேண்டும்
The glorious work of God.
We have done it. You should think about it.
Just think whether you have accomplished God's plan.
He continued to do it.
He did not have any other thoughts.
He did not have any other thoughts.
Any other thoughts of it.
You should read the Bible.
Read the Bible.
Soon after the anointing, he got on the chariot. After finishing that work, he got down. His mind was all to fulfill God's plan and he did not think about his family and food and etcetera.
He only fulfilled God's plan. Therefore, the only plan for which we are anointed is to destroy Ahab. To destroy the people of Beel.
This is the plan regarding him and he fulfilled it in a right way.
Today, how many of us have understood the plan of God? Married or unmarried. Ageed or young. Believer or servant of God. Many do not know the plan of God regarding them. And that is where our life changes. The moment he met Saul. The moment God visited Saul. What is the question he asked?
The first question is, who is this?
Lord, who are thou? Now the Lord reveal himself. Next thing? What did he ask? Lord, what will thou have me to do? After that, no more questions, only answers. First question, shall I know who you are? I am the Lord whom the persecutors. The next word, Lord, what will thou have me to do? Go into the city and it shall be told him. Went straight into the city. They are a servant of God, met him. Life changed. God have wished. Reveal the plan of God. Very next day, stood up with the Bible. How comes such a great change? When he said, what will thou have me to do, he did not speak to him directly, but he said, go into the city, go to the servants of God. And here, it is a servant of God. And gave him the anointing on his head. And within three years, God fulfilled the. Three words. Within three words, the Lord said about his plan. Just verses seven to ten, his chapter was closed. What is that plan of God? One to destroy Ahab, two to destroy the powers of Beel. What is the right meaning? One to subject your body and destroy sin, two to destroy devil. This is the duty falling upon every anointed person. It is for that, the Lord converted him from captain to a king. Only when he fulfilled? That is the question. The Bible said, he finished. But Saul did not. All testament, Saul tried to convince Samuel that he finished everything. He said, I have finished. But then Samuel asked, how can you tell a lie that you finished? Here is the word of God. You can destroy, you should destroy the Amalek. But in first Samuel fifteen eleven. The Lord said. He did not fulfill my word. Was thirteen. He again said, I have performed the commandment of God. Then did God say a lie? He said, I have performed, but the Lord said, he has not done it. What happened? His anointing depart from him. And that anointing was given to his fellows. Kindly understand well, you may be in the church and we in the ministry. A believer or a servant of God, when he commits sin, soon the Lord will not remove him out of the church or the ministry. Out of God's mercy, God may keep him for namesake. But the anointing, the grace, that spirit will depart from him and be given to another. Repeating it. You and me may remain in the church in the house of God. But if I continue not fulfilling the purpose for which I'm anointed. He should fulfill Zion and appear in his glory. And if I'm not compromised with that. If I not get along with that. Then the Lord will not cast us into the decibel. He is not unrighteous to forget your labor of love, therefore, he will keep you in the church in the faith home. But the kingdom of God, that is within you, the grace and the calling is unchanging, but still, that plan for which you are called will be given to another. And very emphatically. Within one year after he was anointed, Saul lost his anointing. After that, thirty nine long years, he was king. Go read in the Bible. All the thirty nine years, he just remained as a king, but actually, the spirit was troubled within him and then God changed David to be the king. Matthew twenty one forty three. The kingdom of God should be taken from you and given to a nation, bringing forth the fruits thereof. You and me may be seated in the church in the ministry, but the Lord will fulfill his purpose through another. Without fulfilling the plan of God, it's of no use, you being a believer or a servant of God. When he received this call. Soon he received your name. When all blew trumpets sing, he became a king. Was sixteen, he rode on a chariot. After receiving the anointing, you have to ride upon a chariot. Anointing is a chariot. You have to ride on it. After you are in the chariot, the spirit of God will. He is ever ready to fulfill the plan. Today, how many of you function with your anointing? What happened there? Soon, when he received the anointing, he went ahead to destroy the house of Ahab. He who rode on a chariot, when he was announced to be a king, did not go to home and decorate himself, but he went to fulfill the plan. Christian life is not a makeup life. Our life should be ridden with an anointing. Kingdom of God is not meat and drink. It's not in speech. Kingdom of God is in power. Soon he received the anointing, he rode in a chariot. Did not go to home. Straight went to the battlefield. After receiving the anointing, strive for faith. Resist even unto shedding of blood. Can subject your flesh. You may sleep. And it may hang. You may feel pain. This body seeks for comfort. It will bring in anger. And it will instigate you. But every time, use the anointing to destroy it. Use the anointing to bruise the head of Satan. Use the anointing to subject your emotions and thoughts. If you don't have that practice, you will fail. What are you doing with the anointing? There are people who perish with their money in adultery and in fornication and in drinking. At the same time, people who progress in life with much conveniences with money. If you lose the life with the anointing, then God is not responsible. He rode. Straight went to another direction. Until then, he spoke among the armies and was chatting with them. That is what the Bible says. They were all commending, mocking and joking. But when the anointing came. He strode up. Straight went to. Went to the son of Ahab. Went to Joram. That is important. If the anointing is within you, it will not allow you to sleep. It will wake you up. It will smile you. It will warm you. It will condemn you. Your heart will palpitate. He will instigate you. He will condemn you. He will chase and control you. He will say, don't go. He will do all that he can, that you may not turn into sin. If you revolve all that. Then God is not responsible. When you see. First Kings chapter eleven. The Lord spoke to Solomon twice. He did not hear. Finally left him. He perished. For that, he did not remain without a good report. But he was in the rain. But his hand was not victorious. So, as many will be in the life in church. But fulfill the purpose for which you are not. He went to destroy the Ahab, but Ahab was not there. But his son was there. Therefore, he straight went in his chariot towards him. Joram was speaking there. Joram and Ahaziah were speaking. Both were kings. But his aim was all of Joram. He straight went towards that. When he saw the speed, he said, the watchman said, somebody is coming, a great group. What happened there? He straight walked towards him. And then he asked, you are coming in so much speed, is it peace? Then what did Jehu answer? And what are you to speak about peace? Go ahead. The next person. Then to him, he said, what about peace for you? Understand well. You should never compromise with sin. Never get into compromise with sin or the devil, then you will fail. You should be reconciled with your brethren. You should be compromised with your husband, wife and family members. But if you are compromised with the sin and the devil, your chapter is closed. Shaking your hands with the devil, if you say, you and me are one, then chapter is gone. If you shake your hands with sin, your life is destroyed. I was a little junior brother. There, there was two sons. One will help the servants of God. The other person will drive the car. Both of them will remain in the faith home. And one day, they both took together. They will say. They will say, you have to resist the devil, but once you resist the devil, our conflict will increase, therefore, just don't look at that. You don't disturb the devil, then he will not disturb us. Then if you say, in the name of Jesus, go, he will stand before you resisting. And look at the way the devil strove in him. And today, just think how we are. Joram came there. Finally, he went near Joram. When Joram saw Jeho. Second Kings nine twenty two, oh Jehu, is a peace. He said, what peace? How can I be at peace with wadams and witchcrafts? See, what a beautiful answer. Two points. As long as the wadams of thy mother, Jezebel, and her witchcrafts are so many, what peace? Anointed person cannot compromise with witchcrafts. Anointed person cannot get along with wadams. If then, you have broken the purpose of anointing. If God, then God will lift up his sword against you. That means he is turning his sword sharp. Soon, he heard the word, Joram started running. He said to Ehaziah, there is treachery, oh Ehaziah. Just think how it will be. Believe it, we have to make use of the anointing at this point. How to make use of the anointing? Many say, we are getting infil, but nothing is done. Receive grace through anointing. Receive the power to overcome sin through anointing. Receiving the power to subject sin. Receive the power to bind the devil. Receive the power to destroy the devil. Whatever you binded it, will be bound to death. In one place, spirit of witchcraft, witch started to speak. The witch said, the rod is coming. She saw the rod coming towards her. Then she started to cry, scream. The spirit possessed sister started screaming. The rod is coming towards me. Now, the witch started to, he started to. Spell against that rod, the scepter. Invisible to us, but visible to that sister. Then we all prayed, in the name of Jesus, that scepter be burnt. A good anointing. Spirit possessed sister said, oh, that rod, that scepter is burnt. Finally, the devil got defeated. Within few minutes, that spirit came again. The spirit of the magical spell came into the sister. Just give me the rod, I will return. Forgive me. I will take it again. And my life is there. Give me back that scepter. We only pray that the works of the devil may be destroyed, what so you bind will be bound. We have the power to burn the wiles of the devil. What is it said in Ephesians six? The power to quench the fiery darts of the devil. Yes, he will send the fiery darts. We have the power to destroy. That is faith. Ephesians six sixteen. We have the power to quench the fiery darts of the devil. Yes, he will say, he will send the doll or the fire, but you say, the name of Jesus, let it be burnt, it will be burnt. But use your anointing for that. Not just using the anointing for clapping hands and jumping. With your anointing, control your flesh. Pray well. Kneel down. Get the voice of God. Understand the will of God. Receive visions. Harken to the voice of God in your ears. And power to realize the will of God in your hearts. This is life. You should not be a child of God, a believer or a servant of God, having been anointed, not getting the visions and the voice of God. Never compromise with sin. Never compromise with the devil. He sent the dart and Joram was killed. Don't think our life is ended with that. He first killed Joram. He was a very important person in the house of Ahab. He first killed Joram. And you know how we did it. He himself stood and did it. He did not command anyone else to do that, but you have to perform your ministry. A servant of God should do his own ministry. A father has to perform his own duty. And if he cannot do that duty, will he give it to another? And it is because the mother does not perform her duty, another person comes in. And she should be a wife and a mother. Without knowing how to lead the family life, it is because many families are shaken. Understand the truth. What happened? He himself did his work. There was a big team before Jeho. He did not say, take children and control. But that is the important truth I like here. Jehu himself drew a bow. And don't give it to anyone else. And if you instigate the dog, the dog will move its tail. You call the dog, it will not come, but move its tail. You will say, brother, you go, and he will say, you go. As you cannot do anything with such a person. That is why the Lord says, I will beat nations through you. Ministry, you ought to do, you have to do and I, I myself. Understand this voice of God. Read it here. Second Kings nine. Was twenty four. Jehu drew above with his full strength. Small Joram, because between his arms. And he smote it between his arms. And he fell down in his chariot. And now I tell, there's failures in Saul's life. Goliath stood. If Saul had stood there in the first day, he would get the victory. But he sent his only men. Is it not? The Lord urged to Saul, but he urged only his tail or his men, saying, you go, if you get the victory, I'll give my daughter. That's where he failed. The David wasn't like that. David himself took the smooth stones to curl down the devil. You should stand in your state. He drew a bow with his full strength. That is very important. To overcome the devil, don't say, brother or sister, you pray and you invite the independent servants of God. You be on knees. You fast. You do whatever God says and surrender. As when you are on knees and God tells, reconcile with your brethren, pacify and do things like that, you have to do it. Is it a great thing for the father in heaven to destroy the serpent? And if he had destroyed the fallen angel, it would be nothing, he did not do that. He sent his own son. He yielded his body to be rent. That is why he could bruise the head of the devil. Understand truth well, and if you do anything as you like, it will not happen. You should draw your bow. And in Tamil, there's a proverb, the mouth and the stomach is different, is it not? Until one year, if the mother eats, then she can feed the child. Once the child grows, only if it eats, it can stand. You have to draw your bow. You have to set right. Set right your peaceable. Set right your consequence. Set right your knees. And you call it to the father and sister. Then until he hears, he reads. Then he reads the Bible well. See what God is speaking. Why he has not spoken? Find why you are unable to hear the wills of God and remove the dumbness. Lord, open my deaf ear. Lord, open the my ear. Lord, let me hear the voice of God. Be open. And practice in hearing the voice of God. This is a time of striving. Strive, ask together in the battlefield. Kingdom of God suffereth violence. That's what the word of God says. Strive and receive things. He drew his bow. Nextly, he drove in the chariot. And if he is a king, another person will come in. He did not sit in the chariot well at ease. He himself rode the chariot. Read that. Second Kings nine sixteen, so Jehu rode in the chariot and went to just redeem. Then one person from the tower said. Why see a company? And it is coming very fast. Was twenty. And he is driving very fast, the driving of Jehu. He is driving very fast, as the driving of Jehu, the son of Nimshai. See this. It is Jehu himself is driving. Anointing made him to ride the chariot, he rode it with the bow and his only plan was to destroy the enemy. What is the show? Life or ministry, you have to accomplish. Life or ministry, you have to accomplish it. And if you are right, not like your mother, then God will help you. And it may be different. Your father, it's true, your father is a great believer, pillar of the church, but who are you? For his life, he has a glorious place in heaven, but you? Look for that. For a spiritual life, we cannot blame, we cannot say about a father or great grandfather, but your life, you are responsible. You have to drive your chariot. You have to draw your bow. You are responsible for your holiness. You are responsible for your righteousness. People with you, if they are doing the ministry, they will receive the reward, but not for you. First, he finished your work. Because he is the king. Nextly. He did not sit at home. He strayed, went to the palace. Went towards Jezabel. Not like us. In the beginning, we have so much of testimonies and prophecies and things like that, but now where are they? It's true, you destroyed Jordan. But still to journey more. Beginning of a spiritual life, we had lot of good things to say, but because of our... And we should not stop that. There is a Jezza. The Lord said, destroy the house of Ahab and even its generation or a seed. When I read it, it was different. One children. Secondly, Jezza. Thirdly, a thoroughly is family. What does it mean? Control your flesh. Destroy the devil. And destroy the seed or the foundation of it. You should not have the thought of sin. Not have the imaginations of the devil. See how the Lord thinks of us. That is why, it is good, you are at first in the beginning, but your end is in the middle. Beginning may be small, but the end should be greater. He did not remain at ease. Straight went. Soon after he slew Jordan, he went to the palace. And she went directly to compromise with him. How is it? Look at her words. With her face painted. And with her hair. 9:30, we see about Jezza. Jehu turned to Jezreel. Jezza, when she heard of it. After hearing that her son is killed, how did the mother come up? Son is killed. And husband was already killed by the Lord. Now only she remains. He is coming to kill her, what is she doing? A little problem in a house, the mother did not give ten rupees to her daughter, and asked him for the reason, it is to trim her eyebrow. It was in Madre City. Such a case, they all ran away. This is not the declaration of a Christian life. This is not the time to attire, paint her face, tire her head and look out of the window. What happened? She came. She thought, if she makes up, she can compromise. You should, the overcomers should not be... The believers or the servants of God, if you are ravished with the makeup, then that means you have destroyed your life. Understand the truth well. That's why we preach, fashion of the world is nothing for us, we don't need it. Purpose of the church is not make you to live without beauty, but the purpose of the church is to make you a bridal church. Our Lord Jesus Christ, without form or beauty, without comeliness, he was upon the cross. You see how this mother had attired herself. Somehow to ravish Jehu. When she came to the gates. She gave a dialogue towards Jehu. And for the anointed, such things would not enter into his ear. Anointed person's ear is a circumstance. Anointed person's lips is a circumstance. Such things should not get into your ears. And she said, had Simbrai P. sent Shri His Master, he did not listen to it. Sister, how are you? There is no one else beautiful than you, or brother, how are you? None else like you. Understand the deception of the devil. You should not be like the old crow, which looked out, because its voice was okay. But now the crow is not like that. The today's ravens are not that. Modern ones, they keep their fit in the net and said, I'm okay. Forced, the fox tried to take out the raven, but then said, the thing is right, I cannot get it. But the fox today, the modern foxes, they said, you take up all these dogs and then bring it down. Understand the truth well. Powers will come up with the makeup to settle you, deceive you. But don't get deceived. Jezza means powers without chastity. The one without chastity. Such powers will fight against you. To defile you. To pull you down. To destroy your conscience. To disconvince your hope. To make you lose your call. To destroy your... To take away your eternal life. These powers will rise up. Don't look at the painting of her face, don't tire her hair. But look at the failures within her. Then she is said. Who was on my side? Then two or three eunuchs came up. Throw her down, he said. When she was thrown down, she was bruised. What is the show? And you have to stand to resist him. And be joined with the servants of God to destroy the devil. In this place, he did not kill Jezza. But he killed Jordan. But he did not kill Jezza. He just commanded the servants of God to kill it. There is an aspect of we standing on our own feet and overcoming the devil, and sin standing with the servants of God to overcome. Because in Hebrews 13 it is said, because they watch for your souls. During the days of Ezekiel, there was a battle. And he went with Isaiah to pray. Both of them, when they looked to heaven and made supplication. 2 Chronicles 32:20. Hisukiah and Isaiah the prophet, they cried out toward heaven, and the Lord sent an angel. That is what happened that day. If you are unable to do that, then share your problems with the servants of God in prayer. Threefold God is like that. You, God and servants of God. Threefold God cannot be broken. For some things, what we have to say, say it. But you should not publish it outside. Some people like broken marks. Soon chatter it like chatter boxes. But tell it to the ones who are confidential. Tell it to the ones who are assured, that they will stand in the gap. Here, he himself did not stand on his feet with the bow, but he called for the eunuchs and asked them to be thrown down. Eunuchs threw down Jezza. When you stand with the servants of God, they will strive in prayer for you. Not only that. Now he went to the next journey. One firstly, he destroyed the important person. Then Jezza. Then destroyed his house. Turning to 10 chapter. There, he sent a person. He sent an epistle. That there were seventy sons in Samaria for Ahab. 2:11. See, the next part of his journey. One against flesh. Two against devil. Three against the word. Our journey towards me against these three. Only if he destroys these three, we have the victory. Here, he destroyed Jordan. And through the eunuchs killed Jezza. And now there are seventy more sons of Ahab. Ahab had seventy sons in Samaria. The Lord said, you have to destroy his family. Now, he came to the next part of his journey. And he said, if you stand on my side, then bring me his hair. Bring me all the seventy heads. It happens. It happened as such. What does this show? Killing seventy persons, an ordinary person cannot do it. It shows the experience of even the believers striving together and overcoming. First, joining with the servants of God. Then with the princes or the believers. As you can see, for prayers, even from confidential believers. Don't keep telling it to anyone. Then they will flash it like a radio news. Some have such a spirit. You cannot trust them. And there are many people like that. But the servant of God and a believer are the stewards of God's mystery. Tell that which they should, and that which they should not, they should not tell at all, even if they die. After their marriage. Both of them will tell the matters before their life, and then they will be back to their home. That is what happening in many houses. That is why I am telling the messages, there is a place to confess sins. If you do it in the place you should not, then your life, your faith, everything will be nothing. He did not go there. He only wrote letters. He sent it to the rulers of Jezreel. The Lord has said. Now you should bring all of them. If you bring all the seventy, then they will know the problem. Then they said, we will do as you say. Was 7. They slew all the seventy persons, placed their heads in the baskets and sent them to Jezreel. See what a kind of life it is. This is the plan of God. He had all his mind full of standing for the Lord and doing the ministry. But is that ended? He comes to the next journey. To destroy the prophets of Baal. Now what is his work? 2 Kings 10:17. When he came to Samaria, he slew all that remained under Ahab and Samaria, as the Lord spoke to Elijah. He did not spare anyone. And all that remained in the house of Ahab. All his great men. All his king forces. All his priests. Until he left none remaining, he killed them. He utterly washed them out. See how it is. This is the truth. We should not spare even a little sin or even a root of the devil. Nextly, he was desirous to kill the prophets of Baal. He said, I want to offer sacrifice to him. All came there. And he said, kill everyone of them. And they left killed everything. And you should not compromise with idols. Do not compromise with backsliders. Utterly destroys such powers. This is the way he fulfilled God's plan. Read 28 ways. Yes, Jehu destroyed Baal out of Israel. What happened because of that? His four generations were kings. What a good God. And see what all he had done for them. When he stood for God. The Lord said, the children of your four generations had sitt in the throne of Israel. You stand for God, God will look for your generations. Your generations will be generations of faith. 2 Kings 15:12. 15:12, what does it say? This was the word of the Lord that he spoke unto Jehu, thy son shall sit on the throne of Israel under the fourth of generation, and so it came to pass. See how God is faithful in his promise. When God anointed him, he said, if you do all that, your four generations will sit on the throne. If your generations should stand for the faith and the truth and in glory, become Jehu. Close your eyes. One minute surrendered to God's word. Lord, as Jehu realized the purpose of anointing, let me also fulfill the purpose of anointing and stand for it. Yes, Lord, this once and God will anoint you now. His anointing was not in vain. He did not waste of his anointing. It was not in vain, it was not waste. He made use of his anointing. Tried upon your chariot. Drew a bow. Drew up your bow. Time for God to destroy enemies. Time for God to use you is coming. Terrible will be the things that I will do through you, the word will be fulfilled. Receiving the anointing, be on your knees. Lord, I feel you've anointed me. To destroy Ahab. To destroy Jezzael. To destroy the house of Ahab. To destroy the powers of Ahab. Lord, help me, strengthen me to destroy words, sin, and flesh. Let us destroy the duty of the anointed. Yes, that power by which he used Jehu, descend upon him. God of Jehu may fill your... Let your mind be full to destroy the enemies. Never, never compromise with the devil and sin. Resist, and he will free from you. Stand in the faith to quench the fiery doubts of the devil. Fight, and if you rise up. God will rise up for you. When God rises up, enemies will be scattered. God anoints me. Fulfill the purpose of anointing and strengthen me, Lord. Be strengthened in the power of his might, Lord. Lord, strengthen me. One minute chance, and the power of God will descend.